Where is the venue?
Here, here, yeah, it's gonna be right here.
What time?
Eight thirty in the morning. Yeah, and uh. It's a Monday morning, yeah. Okay, this starts at eight thirty, so if you can leave right after then and come, you'll be good. That way you can at least, um, if not, well, yeah, we've got mass, I mean, people have to be. That's really already. If you can make it after that, that would be great, and uh.
I was listening, is that March twenty-four?
Yes, March twenty-four, it's a Monday at eight thirty, uh, right in here, we're gonna have an emergency here in this meeting to try to get things more coordinated because we, we had that storm over the summer and just, uh, fortunately, nobody, you know, we didn't have anything major happen, but still, you know, we need to realize there may be a time where we may not make the fortune, is what I'm saying.
So the immediate need was, even if they're stationed when they came back there, send the next route, they can load up the proper water and snacks or anything they can eat on the run, right? So, I guess, uh, last week, I called, and we had some food immediately, and three days later, I called and said, you have eight deliveries, but they were waters, gave away snacks, chef's dick, I, I, uh.
Do you have a tall potato? Yes, say that.
They said, no, 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 we have, you know, but the immediate need was, like the church kids, like whoever can organize quickly, they needed them, they needed free, they needed. I went on the Amazon. We were trying to deliver it to them, and I needed them.
Yes. Uh, Excel, yeah, probably. Uh, which, what type of shirt is that? Okay, yeah, yeah, probably Excel. All right, we're about to start, everyone take their seats, please. Thank you. Yeah. Coach Reguvin. All right, calls being in order. With Coach Reguvin, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish to remain standing invocation by, ooh, I always miss your name, Father, go ahead.
The name is Father Elishus Uju, good evening, everyone. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your blessings to us as we gather today in this city hall. We humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom to deliberate on matters that affect our community. May our discussions be marked by respect, understanding, and a commitment to the common good. May we put interest of others above our own interests. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person. Grant us, Lord, the strength to make decisions that will benefit our residents and build a brighter future for Twenty-Nine Palms. We ask this in your name, amen.
Roca.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Mayor Proton Mintz?
Here.
Mayor Bildery?
Here.
All present?
No close session announcements, change the agenda? Chief's gonna be here? What, fire chief's gonna be here? Oh, there he is. So, announcements, these proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website, www dot twenty nine palms dot org. You may also livestream this meeting by going onto the city's website and clicking on media agendas. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Who do you want to take first? Take them both? Number one, presentation of Twenty-Nine Palms High School Girls Basketball Team for their participation in Cash for Trash Recycle Program.
Hey, Coach.
Good to see you, Dan.
Hello, ladies. So we have a check here for, uh, Burt Tech and the City of Twenty-nine Palms, three hundred dollars each for picking up trash, but gotta earn it, you gotta tell us where you did it at.
We did it over by Freedom Plaza.
Freedom Plaza, good, good.
We picked up, actually picked up a basketball hoop that was trash, so the basketball team picked up a basketball hoop. And a bunch of concrete and, um, lots of trash.
All right, well, thank you, thank you very much for.
Appreciate it.
Keeping our city beautiful, thank you, thank you, ladies, Coach, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on a great season. Next, the Twenty-nine Palms Softball Team. Coach Stanford, congratulations on a successful season.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, softball team, so we have a check here for Burt Tech for three hundred dollars and one from the city, and so where'd we pick up trash at?
By Cactus.
Behind Rite Aid.
Behind Rite Aid, we picked up sixteen bags. There was bees.
There were bees.
There was bees, so we had to stop for, to be safe, but yeah, there were sixteen bags, so.
Well, thank you, glad you were there, glad you were there, glad you were there, and I'll give the checks to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to remind everybody, a lot of people, uh, see us give those checks out, I just want to remind the, when the checks go to the high school like that, the high school, we get, uh, coaches were paid by MUSD, none of the money that goes through these donations through the City of Burt Tech goes to our salaries, so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear about that, we don't get any of that money, so, just let, let you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Number two, presentation by the Parks and Recreation Department on a grant recei- recently received by the National Recreation and Park Association, Gender Equality in Sports Community and Practice Grant, supported by Nike.
Okay, tell me when to do it. Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone, my name is Amy Tessier, I'm the Recreation Program Supervisor for Parks and Recreation, and today I'm excited to announce that we have received, uh, we are selected one out of ten park and rec agencies in the nation to receive funding from Nike and the National Recreation and Park Association, also known as NRPA, to advance gender equity in youth sports through their Gender Equity in Youth Sports Community of Practice Grant. This initiative aims to advance gender equity in youth sports, ensuring that girls have equitable access to the physical, mental, and societal benefits that sports provide. Through a shared commitment to fostering inclusive play, NRPA and Nike are empowering local park and rec agencies to lead the way in closing the gender gap in youth sports. As a grantee, Twenty-Nine Palms Parks and Recreation will receive twenty thousand dollars, and staff, myself and a couple other coworkers, will participate in professional development opportunities and peer networking through the community of practice to implement strategies that successfully increase equitable access and participation in sports for girls in Twenty-Nine Palms. So, to do this, Twenty-Nine Palms will contribute to the gender equity roadmap by, that is being created by NRPA and Nike by partnering with Girls on the Run Inland Empire. They are a nonprofit that is dedicated to inspiring girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident. Girls on the Run combines physical activity with engaging lessons that emphasize the importance of self-confidence, healthy relationships, and vital life skills. Over the course of the ten-week program, participants prepare for a celebratory five K event, all while learning how to set goals, overcome challenges, and make a positive impact in their communities. The signature Girls on the Run program actually began today with our girls in third through fifth grade. Tomorrow, the Heart and Soul program will begin, and that's for girls in grades six through eight. The program runs until May twenty-second, when the girls will participate in a celebratory five K event. The grant funding is gonna cover sixty-five percent of the registration fee, which includes weekly training sessions, and end-of-the-season five K celebration, a program t-shirt, supplies, and running sneakers for every participant. Families who need full scholarships also did receive that, so many of the girls are actually participating free of charge, thanks to that grant. Additionally, we'll be using the grant funding to run two week-long Girls on the Run Summer Camps this summer as well, and that'll be for up to sixty girls in grades, uh, three through five. So I think this is an exciting grant opportunity, not only for bringing funding to a nationally recognized program that I personally have been following for about twenty years now, um, but it also elevates Twenty-Nine Palms as a leader in advancing gender equity, as our experiences will help create the programs and grant opportunities based on our lessons learned. I'll answer any, any questions?
Council?
How many, you said the three third through fifth graders started today, how many did you have today?
Today we had fifteen, um, we do have funding for up to, uh, forty girls in that program and up to thirty girls in the, the Heart and Soul program, I think because it's new, people don't know what it's about yet, so we had to hustle hard to get, to get those girls, tomorrow we should have ten girls in the program for Heart and Soul.
That's a good start.
Yeah, it's a start.
How do they register?
Um, they register through the Girls on the Run website, um, it's Girls on the Run Inland Empire.
Is it only two nine girls?
We opened it to the whole Morongo base, and the majority of them are twenty-nine, we have one, one girl from Yucca and one girl from Morongo, actually.
Okay, cool.
That's joining.
All right. Any city, any, any, oh, yeah, some, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I don't have a question, more just so a thank you, because I think that it's important to empower young ladies to participate in sports at that, so I, while I'm very proud of the young ladies that are participating in this, I also wanted to say thank you to the adults that put in the effort to get this grant, because you are making, um, a life change for some of these kids, so thank you.
Well, I have one more, um, the girls that are on, like, All-Star right now, would they be able to participate afterwards?
Um, depending on when, we did start this week, but if people wanted to start, say, next week, um, we could bring in girls late if we needed to, um, we have the space for them, they'd start to develop a friendship and a group, a team atmosphere, you know, in the first two weeks, but um, if there were particular girls, I could see if we could add them in, um, after All-Stars ends.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, anyone from the public, any comments, questions? No, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you, my pleasure, thank you.
Yes. Right, number three, proclamation recognizes March twenty twenty-five as Irish-American Heritage History Month. City of Twenty-nine Palms proclamation, Irish-American Heritage Month, whereas Irish immigrants who sought the new beginnings of the United States arrived on our shores with hearts full of hope and dreams of the future, with grit and determination, they worked hard, and as they built their lives, they helped build America, never forget, never forgetting where they came from, always remembering the courage and pride they brought with them on the old, from the old country and passing these traits down to each new generation, and, whereas pride lives in, on today in the hearts of Irish-Americans across the nation, it lives in our business owners, scientists, and labor leaders, who, who hold dear the Irish belief that everyone deserves to be treated with dignity, and it runs deep into many first responders, public servants, and brave service members who defend our lives and liberties. The same liberties that so many Irish immigrants and Irish-Americans have preserved and protect, and now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Twenty-nine Palms does hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-five as Irish-American Heritage Month, and calls upon all Americans to celebrate the achievements and contributions of the Irish-Americans to our nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs, dated this eleventh day of March twenty twenty-five. Ms. Cora, would you please?
Hello. Heard your proclamation, congratulations.
Very nice.
Can you give us a little, little background? All right.
Yikes. I'm usually not, um, like, a person that is lost for words. Do you want me to speak?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I will, Cindy said I should, so I will. Um, first of all, I really want to thank, like, everybody in this town for welcome, welcoming us to this wonderful city. It's a great city, I love it. The desert chose us, meaning me and my sister. My mom passed away in two thousand and ten, and, um, she, well, this is why we're here, but she had come to Twenty-nine Palms in nineteen eighty-nine and bought the Virginian. She was a hundred percent Irish, and it's crazy because my dad was a hundred percent Italian, so think of the combination, yeah? Can I get a little funny, or should I not? When my mom and dad used to fight, my dad would throw meatballs and my mom would throw cabbage. So anyway, so she was a widow, and she completely came out here on her own. She had a great vision here in Twenty-nine Palms. We were raised Italian, but my mom never forgot her heritage. She was truly a warrior with tremendous strength as a woman and a human being. It would be an honor for me to accept this award for her and her memory. If it wasn't for her, we wouldn't be in Twenty-nine Palms, and I thank you all, and the Virginian thanks you all. Thank you kindly for accepting me. You know who you are, thank you. I even saw Father tonight from, yes, I did, it was wonderful, thank you.
Right, number four, proclamation recognized, recognizes March twenty twenty-five as Women's History Month. City of Twenty-nine Palms proclamation, Women's History Month, whereas every month, every March, Women's History Month provides the opportunity to honor the generations of trailblazing women and girls who have built our nation, shaped our progress, and strengthened our character as people, and whereas throughout our history, despite hardship, inclusion, and discrimination, women have strived and sacrificed for equality and, uh, for equity and equality in communities across the country. Generations of Native American women were stewards of the land and continue to lead the fight for climate justice. Black women fought to end slavery, advocated for civil rights, and passed Voting Rights, the Voting Rights Act. Help pass the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution so that no American would be denied a vote on the basis of sex, whereas, whereas women and girls continue to lead groundbreaking civil rights movements for social justice and freedom, so that every woman can realize their full promise of America, and now therefore be resolved that the City Council of, uh, of City of Twenty-nine Palms does hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-five as Women's History Month and invites everyone to learn more about the vital contributions of women in our nation, of our nation's history, dated the eleventh day, March twenty twenty-five. And on behalf of Janet Codish, owner of Ace Hardware, can Kelly Corney come up?
Hi, Kelly. Nice to you. This is your proclamation?
Speech?
No.
No?
Thank you very much, I see, it's so treacherous.
Yes, if she wanted to also be to pass that without you, that Ace Hardware would not be running smoothly and exist what it is today because of you, you've made that place what it is, so she wants to thank you, she want to make sure it got passed to you, right?
And thank you to the community, because we can't do it without you guys.
All right, thank you. Number five, presentation by San Bernardino County Fire Department, Chief Bill Villarreal on Fire Prevention, Villarino.
Good evening, how are you guys, thank you for having me. Oh, perfect, thank you. Uh, you had it right, Villarino. Uh, Stone and I talked quite a bit, and we were talking just recently, and he asked if I'd come over here and give a, a little county fire update, it's been a while since I have, um, and talk a little bit about wildfire mitigation, obviously with the fires in LA, that's been a big topic. Um, I've done the same presentation out in Needles and, and as well as, uh, Yucca Valley, so, um, and, and just concern citizens, concerned councils, and city managers, uh, some of the wildfire mitigations that homeowners or residents can do, um, this is a pretty safe area, uh, we're in the middle of the desert, but you can't put it past that, if, once wildfires get going, uh, and, and get the wind going, that everyone is vulnerable at that point, so I have a quick presentation after the update, that's just gonna go over some of the stuff that, uh, we're looking at, at, what county fire does, and then also what, um, residents can do to help with their residence, to be a hardened structure or a safer structure. So as you guys know, we have one station here, uh, Yucca Valley, it's, uh, Station Forty-four, three, three people a day, a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter, paramedic, uh, out of that station, we house a Type One fire engine, uh, fairly new, it's about three, four, about four years old, uh, fire engine, we have a water tender there as well, a brush patrol Type Six, uh, which is kind of like a pickup truck with a, a tank on the back, we use it for some of the off-road areas, and then we also have an OES, uh, brush patrol, and what that is, is it looks a little bit different than the other type of equipment you might see, it's green, um, it's Office of Emergency Services, and we, we make a deal with them, as well as other fire departments, and when they have large incidents, they call upon us, we put people on that, we supply the personnel, and we send them off, so recently, they've gotten, they went to all the fires last year, um, as well as, uh, they went down to LA fires as, uh, a part of a task force, uh, doing search and rescue operations. Um, and so, once they leave, though, the big question is, what, do we, does our station go empty, and it doesn't, we backfill it right away. So if we send them out, we send an engine over here right away, so you don't go uncovered, and then the following day, we have additional personnel that come in and staff different equipment, so it doesn't ever go uncovered, but it is our part on, uh, up and down the state, and partaking in our, uh, mutual aid system. So some of our call stats, this is the last quarter of the year, uh, September to twenty-four, um, total of seven hundred and fifty-two calls out of the station, to break it down, just, uh, structure fires, some bus fires, rubbish fires, trash fires, uh, we had the one railcar fire, unknown type fires, or just type of, uh, fires that people call them warming fires, maybe, uh, the unhoused, um, might have a warming fire, and we go out there and check those out, vehicle fires, uh, alarms or investigations, mostly medical aids, obviously you can see, five hundred and fifteen, some public services, traffic collisions, um, electrical incidents, and then, um, some of those canceled in route, so sometimes, since this engine will head out towards Amboy or head out towards the freeway to assist the other engines out there, uh, they get going and they'll get in route, and then they just get canceled when other engines get on scene, or, or we have someone that CHP on scene that states that the incident's no longer needed, uh, for another fire engine. County fire update, uh, just for this area, since I cover, I cover the entire Morongo base and all the way to Needles, um, so we have six fire stations within that area, and some of the things, one of the biggest things we got going right now is, we got a grant, um, and, I'm sorry, not a grant, we had money donated, and, uh, we're in the process of building a new station in Yucca Valley, uh, it was donated for Yucca Valley, and, um, it's gone through the entire process, we're hoping to break ground this year, it's going to plan check. Um, we did a Station Forty-three remodel off of Lear, so we don't have that, the staffing, the money for staffing yet, but we're able to remodel the entire station, and it's ready, and, and when we do have the, the, um, financial ability to put staffing in there, it's a, one of the priorities for me, um, to, just for the, oh, the, to kind of close the gap between our station and Joshua Tree and here, um, kind of closing that gap, um, obviously, with the expense and personnel is always one of the biggest ones, um, we're always fighting that challenge, but it's a, a constant fight that I'll do, and, and now the station is completely remodeled, ready to go. Um, sorry, that's all right. Uh, I wanted to just chat a little bit about the bridge and line fire, those were the big fires we had in our county last September, and I haven't seen you guys, or, or I haven't talked to you, um, one other thing is the county fire definitely offers is just our, our regional response, so when the, the, the bridge fire was, I'm sorry, when the, uh, line fire was, uh, active, we had thirty, forty pieces of equipment just on that fire. When the, when the bridge fire took off into Wrightwood, we were able to staff up, um, I myself was on the line fire and left to go to the other one, and then we staffed up, and we took about thirty-five fire engines into that community of Wrightwood, and we were able to stop the fire. There was a few things that helped us, that Mother Nature was one of them, the wind slowed down, and that helped us quite a bit, but we were also putting, able to put enough fire engines, they were all county fire engines, not to say there wasn't some LA County engines there in addition to that, because they share some of that area up there with us and some of the other cooperators, but we were able to pull, uh, personnel in from home, and then, as well as all the fire engines in the different cities that we provide service, we pulled them up there and, and able to make a stance against that fire. Why I tell you that is because that's the same kind of thing out here, when some, we have a major incident, we have the resources to get them on the road, our battalion chiefs are, are trained, and they understand if this incident's growing, we start getting engines on the road early, because we know it's gonna take a little time, we have a great, uh, relationship with the base, um, and, but after that, we don't have anyone else coming other than county fire, uh, Cal Fire Riverside, they're, they're about an hour and a half out, but we can get them up here as well. So what we do is when we see an incident growing fast, we'll definitely get engines on the road, they're coming out of the high desert, which is gonna be Lucerne, um, Hesperia area, or the San Bernardino area, and then we'll backfill those guys, but we make sure we have enough resources available out here where the incident grows. Still not done, nope, almost. Uh, had to remind myself what, what I wrote, no, no big deal, um, ten reserve fire engines, so another big thing, uh, you know, not, not to reflect a lot on the LA fires, but there's some lessons learned there for everybody, um, but one of the things was, they had people respond in and didn't have reserve apparatus for them to, to respond on. We kind of went through that a little bit as well on a smaller scale when we had the line and bridge fire, we had more personnel come in than we had apparatus, and our apparatus are so expensive today, a current fire engine is over a million dollars, and that's doubled probably since I started the fire service over twenty years ago. in the fire service over twenty years ago. And then, not only that, to get a fire engine, the way we spec it out and want it, it's three to four years from the time we cut them a check. It takes that long to get a fire engine. A ladder truck is now about two million dollars and a longer wait time and supply chain issues and whatever. And, and there's, there's people trying to work through those kinks. However, it shows you that we have a very aggressive replacement plan for our fire apparatus, but that's for our first out units. And so our area, all in here from Yucca Valley and Joshua Tree and Twenty-Nine, our apparatus is all in good shape, but our reserve apparatus is really outdated. And so what happened here is the border supervisor supported us with huge support, and we made a purchase of ten reserve fire engines. And what, what's different from those is they're more of a cookie cutter type fire engine. It's not our perfect fire engine that we like to spec out and utilize and fits our organization the best, but we can put people on it. It has a pump, and to anyone else, no one would know the different difference other than the firefighters that are on the engine. But it has the same pump, same, it might be a smaller motor, maybe a little different size, but where the, the company's made was more of a cookie cutter engine that they can get to us in about ten, eleven months. And so out here, we'll get one or two of those ten engines that'll be just on reserve. So when we do have people come in and we're able to staff up, or if our frontline units go down, we have a, a good unit to put them into. The MCI drill, we had did that big MCI drills. We did it out here in the National Park. It went really well. Stone was one of our volunteers. I meant to put a picture of, I had a really good picture of you, Stone. I'll get it to you. But Stone participated as well as gentleman from the Water District. And basically, what that was is just to get all these cooperators together from the, the base to Marango ambulance. I think we had almost twenty cooperators that, and getting everyone together. And what that does, kind of work out some of the kinks. In the National Park, there's no cellphone service. Most people know that. And, and our radios don't work really well. So everything that we're used to and working with cooperators is complete opposite when you get into the park. So the battalion chief that put that on, he, he figured, hey, let me, let's get out in the park and let's work with the National Park. And we simulated a bus accident of children and with multiple victims, and how are we gonna work together to get, make all that happen, to get them to the right places and get them to the appropriate facility, hospital, if it's a trauma center down the hill, or if it's one of our local hospitals. And they did a three-day drill, and it worked out really well. We were able to find some of our kinks. We had huge communication gaps that we needed to kind of figure out how to, how to work that plan with the National Park as well as the other cooperators. And that's usually the biggest problem that any large emergency has is your communication issue. So that, that drill worked out really well. Another thing with county fire is our drone program. It's a new program. We're kind of taking the lead on this in, in the fire service, and it's working out really well. I bring that up in here. Just had a recent rescue of a rock climbing incident out in this, this area. Trying to remember the exact place. Anyways, we were able to utilize our drone, locate the victim, and, and then not only that, our drone was able to, it had gotten dark at that point, and guide our firefighters out of our, our rescuers out of the area on a pretty treacherous walk and climb to get out of that area. But they were able to find a safe path for them with the drone. The other, the other item that drones being used for is we're sending them out on some of those unknown type fires in some of areas as a trial area, setting, setting a fire engine out. They're setting the drone out, and they're even communicating with some of the people with the, the small warming fires and letting them put the fire out. And that took, they did in San Bernardino for a month, and some of those engines were going on five, six calls a night on just those type of fires, and it took them down to maybe one a night on that type of unknown fire. So the drone program is gonna expand. We can, we're like thinking about possibly using it for some of those incidents where it says canceled en route, where we could send a drone out to some of those accidents along with an engine, but the drone could get out the first and just evaluate the scene from the sky and, and do a lot of things that would really help keeping our resources back where they belong. And the last thing is our PIO program. We've had a PIO program for quite a while. Now it's grown, and, and this helps us, the fact that we have a fire department personnel assigned completely to that's what they do, and they're on shift, so the twenty-four-seven. So for the media, for social media and the media, and especially out in this area, we have radio station. It's one of the only areas that I know that still has active radio stations, talk shows, as well as a newspaper, and, and they're very active and involved with the, with what we're doing. So this has someone on, on, ready to be, you know, to get the information to them right away after any large incident we have, so we can get the proper information out to the citizens. So wildfire prevention and mitigation. Some of the things that county fire does. So we have the residential assessment program, the RAP. The next slide, and I'll show you in a few minutes, but that one there, that's flyers that we usually give out, or we have them at our headquarters, and you can just get them offline. And what that, basically, the RAP program is, and we've talked about it a little bit before, and it's catching a little more traction now, is if residents are concerned about their property, or they don't, don't know quite what to do to their property to make it a safer from either wildfires or just, you know, sometimes these fires will just catch in the yard, and because of what's around their house, from their vegetation, it gets up into their house. We've had many fires, just a backyard fire turned into a structure fire. And so what the, the RAP program does is that the local engine company will come out to the residents by the request of them and just walk around with the homeowner and show them some of the things they can do to their house to make it a better, safer environment. Again, after the LA fires, that has gotten a lot more traction. We've had that program for a little while, and it's kind of hit and miss. People feel like if we're gonna go to their properties, that we, we're looking there to violate them on a codes or, or weed abatement. And, and we don't, the fire engines, that's not what the intent is. The intent is purely educational and trying to help them make their, their, their home a little more wildfire resistant. We have a fuels reduction crew, and so that's fairly new to county fire. And what they're doing is they're out there doing some wood chipping. They're clearing up the sides of roads. We've done some chipping events in different areas. We're thinking about doing one out in Pioneer Town. And so it's just something when people, you get together with the cities, and when they're, when they're, when they're clearing their yards and don't know where to take all this stuff, sometimes we'll set up an event and kind of in collaboration with the city and put together a chipping day. And that's just all about just reducing the fuels around your house. And then some of the, the new construction is high fire severity stuff. So in the high fire severity zones, the construction, the codes currently, and, and this isn't considered one currently, it's not, not that it's changing, but it's not considered a high fire severity zone. But the construction laws change and talk about hardening your structure and you can't, the way you build your house and stuff. So that's one of the codes that we've adopted at county fire in those areas. There's the flyer and the, the fuels reduction project. So the hand crews, they do curbside chipping, roadside fuel abatement. I think right now, they're working along up in Waterman Canyon in San Bernardino and that deep canyon there where the old fire had started back in early two thousands, and reducing some of those fuels going up along the roads there. They do contract work, and then some of it's grant funded by Fire Safe Council's grant-funded projects that are, the Fire Safe Councils of some of the mountain areas will, will be, have money to go ahead and, and contract the hand crews for that. So some of the risks, you know, when homes, with the wildfire risks, homes can be exposed to wildfire through the embers. Embers are the biggest ones, direct, obviously, direct flame contact and radiant heat exposure. So I, I bring that up. Once a structure fire catches, gets, the house gets going on fire, and, and if it's a small brush fire, once that house catches on fire, and if there's any wind, those embers can travel for miles. And then they lodge, what they do is they'll lodge into the roof, they get into your attic vents. And because of that, if you don't have any home hardening on your house, and no one knows, if the homeowner's not home, and now that house catches on fire, no one, no one really knows how that fire started. Well, it could have been from a fire from blocks over. And so understanding that those flying embers are just as dangerous, or when you see some of the illegal burning and people are burning out of parameters. We allow burning on certain days and certain times of year, but at a certain point, those, just those, when they're doing, people are just doing some burning in the yard for the yard clearances, those get out of parameters and get too big, and those embers start flying, and the wind picks up. Or if you take it beyond the, the prescribed hours of till noon, you're supposed to shut those down, and, and the homeowner chooses to maybe take it till two that day. Well, we all know in the afternoon, the winds pick up and those embers get flying. Some of the home hardening stuff that we talked about a lot is fire resistant roofing materials. I hear pretty common that's gonna be comp is, is good or tile roofs. Cover the vents with metal mesh. That's something that a homeowner can do. That's really not, it's pretty, pretty efficient to, to do that, and it's not too difficult or to have someone do that. Dual pane windows, tempered glass, and then fire resistant siding or stucco or some type of siding that's not a wood shake. Just a picture to kind of show what I was talking about here is the siding, gutters. I'll talk a little bit about defensible space, and then the windows and, and those items. So defensible space, one of the biggest things we can do to protect our homes. And when I talk about defensible space, I talk about a few different things, not just the weeds, and it's also clearing of just any items along your house. And if, and if you think about your, your, your house, and I'm probably guilty as well, you know, what someone would call maybe RV parking or boat parking next to the house, whether they park their RV or boat there. They may harden their house. They may do everything that we asked. They did all the yard clearance, and there's nothing that against the code that says they can't park that there. But as soon as they park that there, it kind of eliminated all the hard, home hardening they did, because that, that boat or that, that RV is very susceptible to any type of embers or any type of fire. And once that catches on fire, it's just gonna link house to house. And so when we talk about defensible space, I talk more about the vegetation, but in my mind or in your minds, I want you to understand as well that it's just as important that, in addition to RV, we all do it too. If you have a space alongside your house, it's, it's a spot to store stuff. And that stuff's all usually flammable. It's a fuel, a type of fuel that, once catches, it will catch your house on fire. So the three zones that we talk about are Zone Zero, and that's zero to five feet. And our high fire severity areas, that's a big one. So it's, it's, we can't enforce that. But that, it's been proven by multiple tests that having zero to five feet cleared around your house from all vegetation, wood fences that connect to your houses, a lot of the houses down in the Palisades have anything with wood fences is what connected house to house. And so removing anything from five feet combustible from your house. It's very controversial, though, because if I go to you and ask you to take all your plants and trees away from against your house, you're not very happy about it, right? Residents are. And so we know that's controversial, and I know that's, it's talked up all the way, all the way through the state. It's proven that it does work, but it also, it, it's, it's a tough pill to swallow when we're asking you to clear out your vegetation or your ornamental or your stuff, your vegetation up against your house. Zone one is five to thirty feet. It's a little easier to, to swallow. And that's just, you know, reducing all the, the tall weeds and, and the brush away from that area. And then the Zone, Zone Two is the thirty to a hundred feet, and, and spacing out your trees, clearing, limbing up your trees, removing any ladder fuels or dead vegetation. Ladder fuels are the, some of the, the weeds or bushes that underneath the trees that catch the tree on fire. Once a tree catches on fire, again, you get those embers that get up in the air and the wind. So back to the Zone Zero a little bit. Talk about non-combustible mulches, rocks, decomposed granite, gravel, any type of hardscaping, concrete brick, pavers up against the house for those first five feet. Replace any combustible fencing adjacent to the structures. And they, like it says there, and I stated earlier, it's like a wick for the fire. Once that fence just smolders for a while, it just leans up against the house. And, and even with the stucco and, and the siding, that, that paper, weather paper is behind there. And eventually, that ember is just gonna, it just, it seeps underneath there and, and it'll find its way. And once that catches on fire, then it's up in the walls and, and your house will catch on fire at that point. We're good. So just a quick diagram of what that looks like, the five feet, the thirty feet, the hundred feet. So also county fire has, what we talked about, Ready, Set, Go. It's a Ready, Set, Go. It's a program, and we, we talk to the residents about being, just being ready. And that's not just for fires, for all disasters. Just being ready, have an evacuation plan, having a, having your stuff all set to go, right? And then when the time is, is called, that you go and evacuate. During any, any, any issues or if earthquakes, floods, whatever it is, we ask that, that, that if we, if we're asking to evacuate, to leave. And one of the examples I give often is the Wrightwood situation. So when the bridge fire took off, Wrightwood, the community of Wrightwood has a pretty good plan together as a community on what they're gonna do. And they, they've, they've planned for fires for many years, and they've had some. They've never had it, well, in many years, haven't had it come into the valley as it did this time. It came into their town. By the time I got up there, they had completely evacuated. And it's a very tight one-way out of there. There's the back way out to go towards LA, but those, that was where the fire was coming. So they were closed off one hundred percent, and they could only get out going through Highway Two and into San Bernardino that way. By the time I got up there, from one fire to the other, they had completely evacuated the town. It was the only way we were able to save that town is because the roads are tighter and smaller, and, and the fire engines are able to get there. But the community didn't fight back. They, they understood that it was time for them to go, and they packed their stuff. And as hard as that is to anyone to leave their house, if you've ever been evacuated or know anyone that has, it's very difficult to leave your house because you're just leaving it unwatched in your eyes, that way you feel, or, or did you grab everything? And so really try to help our community understand that the value is to, to get out of the, get out of the way, get to safe area. So if you're ready and you have a plan, you know you can get out of there. And then at that point, let the, the firefighters and the sheriffs and the police departments get in there and do the work. That's our website. A lot of good information on there for everybody, the residents. The Ready, Set, Go program's on there, our RAP program's on there. So I, you know, as much as I can get that out as, as possible for everyone. There's, it's a lot of good, we update it regularly on just the things that are going on within the county. So it's a really good spot. That's pretty much it. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to ask. I don't want to take up too much of your time, though.
Council questions? Anyone in the public?
Hi, question.
Yes, sir.
How often do you guys back up? I mean, I know, the general question about the area. We have one of ours that is out of service. You think you back going to another unit and this. Does it happen a lot to, as far as like, I know Marango Valley doesn't have county fire anymore. They have their own fire department. Are we short because of that, since we closed the Joshua Tree stations in the middle?
Uh, no, Joshua Tree's still staffed. Joshua Tree Fire Station.
Oh, the one in downtown? I was talking about the, the two, Lear and the little one by the college.
So the Lear station closed, I think, some time back before county fire came in, and it was closed before we had come in. And so Joshua Tree meets us this way. The fire engine comes this way. And so, yeah, when, when this engine leaves out on a call, the next call that goes out is gonna grab the next closest engine, the way the dispatching works. And so that could either be our Joshua Tree engine or coming from the base. So we have an agreement with them that they'll respond into our calls right away. So usually, once this, I'll be listening to the radio, once this engine goes out, and it's off, and this is a fairly busy engine, get another call, either the base will come or our engine will come. If it's gonna be an extended incident, then we move an engine out here. So if it looks like they're going up into the park for a while, sometimes they get up there, and again, they get up there and they don't have any service outside of the park, then we'll move an engine out. The battalion chief can move an engine out to get covered, so we don't go undercover. Another question?
Yes. LA, we found out a lot of the equipment was not working properly, so wasn't dispatched. Do you have that same problem?
Some of their apparatus, like the fire engines. So I believe that, that what was said is some of, and I can't speak a hundred percent because they haven't come out with their full report, but some of their reserve apparatus was in rough shape and unable to be used and out of service. So we have units that are out of service, and, but we won't put them in service. You know, if this engine went out of service for the pump failure or something, it could be down our shop. It looks like it's perfectly good engine to, to any, to, to anyone looking at it, but realistically, it's not a safe engine to operate. So we immediately try to get stuff out of there, but I can't say that there wouldn't be an engine down there that'd be out of service. That's the point of kind of bringing in these ten engines to the county, and that they, we have them, and they're brand new and ready to go. And so spread out through the county, if the, if the incident is, you know, wherever it's growing, we have those engines to send, so we have as many engines there as possible. Yes, sir.
When you're doing fuel reduction out in county lands, they notice any noncompliance by Edison, do you send them any notices of your findings?
So our fuel reduction stuff, it's a little finicky because it's, it's, you can't go on private. And when we're doing for fuel reduction, we're, we're going where we can or we're asked to. So if it's county or city property and the city wants us there, we can help do some stuff. So as for code enforcement, I think is what you're looking at. All the weed abatement stuff is done through county code enforcement or a, a local city if they have their own code enforcement, and they do the weed abatement. And it would be up to them. Now Edison is supposed to follow the same rules as everybody else. I'd like to say that it happens a hundred percent, but I probably remind you that there are some areas, there are some areas that Edison has power lines that aren't. I think with all the fires over the years, I mean, I know they've gotten very proactive. They also use a lot of drone flying to look in their areas to see where a lot of the fuels are. And if they've done a lot, they do a lot of their own fuel reductions.
But does your field technicians always communicate the findings to your cooperating agencies, the city and other?
Oh, yeah, definitely. If we have issues. Today in Yucca Valley, we had, you know, some apartments and, and they had concerns. So we sent out our, our prevention officer to go out there looking. And everyone's kind of communicating just to make sure that we can get what we need to. It's very difficult on private property to enforce, you just about any, you know, it's a slippery slope, right? A lot of people don't want us to enforce a lot of stuff on their property, but they also want to be safe as well. So we want to try to balance that and make sure we can cover both of those. Yes, sir.
You just might just be understanding that when it's time for somebody to do an development, that we need to bury the overhead electrical lines underground. That's for more, more for fire prevention. What was the reason? Was it more for fire prevention or?
I'm not familiar with that code on having to put the, the, the lines underground like your electrical and all your utilities. Yeah, I'm not familiar with that code. I could, I mean, I know you're here quite a bit, so I could probably look that up and find out. Off the top of my head, I know, so any commercial building- Off the top of my head, I know, so any commercial building where we have to put ladders up, any overhead obstruction block us. So, um, in my twenty some odd years experience in the last ten, ten years in, uh, as a battalion chief in San Bernardino, any of the big fires we have down there, anytime we put that ladder truck up, we can't put it up if there's overhead lines. So off the top of my head, and that's that's just going, I'm just giving you an opinion. I can look up the exact reason or ask the right person and give you a better answer, but, um, that's something I kind of.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, council comments and reports of meetings attended, Councilwoman Ramirez.
Hi, um, I attended the pizza party over at Alum- Oasis Elementary to celebrate their success from their Black History Month. I also had a meeting with Ms. Lynette Ramirez, who is, um, has a nonprofit and she's looking to come and bring more programs for our community and kids here, um, during the summer and, you know, soon to come. I went to the swearing in ceremony for Senator Ochoa Bow. She is literally the sweetest, kindest person, very, very good lady. Um, I went to the Pelican dinner and then I also met with several constituents about, uh, private issues, uh, housing assistance and, um, code enforcement complaints.
All right, thank you, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the swearing in ceremony for Senator Ochella Boge. Um, I went to a national park demonstration in Joshua Tree. I also attended, uh, the second demo Toastmasters meeting at Lucky Park. Uh, we're looking at doing another one on the nineteenth, uh, next week, Wednesday, um, but it's still to be determined. I also went to the Pelican Club mixer and I also attended the planning commission meeting.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I spent most of my time these last few weekends at all star tournaments, uh, one in Needles and other one in Palm Springs and our youth are doing a fantastic job representing the city of Twenty Nine Palms, uh, playing basketball ball and, um, it's it's tiring, but very good, that they're doing great, so.
That's it. Mayor Pro Temp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met with, uh, Dr. Wolf, the SBCTA, uh, director, gave me a little orientation meeting. Um, then we actually had the SBTCTA meeting last Monday or last Wednesday. Uh, most of the stuff that was discussed there was all about the freeways, uh, most of the money, um, being just giving us updates on that. And then I was up there parking cars at Skies Limit. And again, it just amazes me how many folks go up there to look at the stars, but how far away they come to do it. Um, like whole fifty people from Menifee came up just to watch, just to do it, so. And there's, uh, folks from all over the country, so all over the world come up there and just to watch the stars, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you. First one, start with all the birthdays in March, happy birthday. Uh, happy birthday to my youngest daughter Gina, she's fourteen, going on twenty seven, so good for her. I attended the Needles All-Star Tournament and the Palm Springs also All-Star Basketball Tournament and like, uh, uh, Councilman Wright said that our youth are doing a good job, they're battling it out there. They're taking on bigger, better teams that are, they play all year long. Our our kids play for like six weeks and they go out there and try to compete and they're doing a really good job competing, so that's the grit the two nine has. I also did a personnel subcommittee with Mayor Pro Temp and with, uh, Mr. James and had some meetings with citizens and that is all. Consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items may be removed from the city, from the consent counter and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on a consent counter items prior to the city council's actions. Counsel. No, public. Also no, counsel motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved, five oh.
No items removed, public hearing none, discussion of potential action items. Also none, future council initiated items. Any to add, any comments on those, any updates? Nope, all right, then we're moving. Public comments, this is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and should not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out a name and address slips and give them to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments are specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration on the items on the agenda. And please, when you come up here, please, your full name and address where you're from. So when the media wants to report, they know they don't call us, ask you who that was and we gotta go back on tape to identify you. So please, thank you so much. Leading off, Scott Curry.
Good evening, House everybody. I just wanted to give an update, I volunteered at the Flying Doctors in Yucca Valley this weekend. A couple of months ago, Jeff came and asked for support and volunteers and it was very rewarding, just awesome. I'm guessing, I'm not a spokesman for him, but he gave me permission to talk, he wasn't able to make it. Maybe a hundred total volunteers, I think there were thirty dentists, uh, fifteen ophthalmologists. Uh, two day session, we wait, we took care of over three hundred patients. It was all free. I have a request for you. I didn't understand, I'm I'm new to the volunteer for Flying Doctors. They pay considerable amount of money, thousands of dollars to rent the facilities. And perhaps for twenty twenty six, Twenty Nine Palms can maybe donate their Freedom Plaza building, the gymnasium. Um, I'd be the first one, I know it's, uh, hard cost as far as custodial and things like that. A lot of people through, it'd be wonderful even with the farmer's market, they could also get free dental and eyeglasses. And I'd be willing to pledge a thousand dollars towards a staffing cost if Twenty Nine Palms is able to do a facility for them at lower no cost. The students that helped were unbelievable, as you guys that went to basketball. Uh, these were fifteen, sixteen year old kids, I was most impressed, the VFW stepped in. Uh, it was a, it was a great cause, great staffing, I think Twenty Nine Palms would really enjoy having it. I did registration and I think the majority of the people, over fifty percent, were from Twenty Nine Palms. So there's a big need, so thank you.
Thank you. Eric Lindes?
Hello, uh, sorry, forgot my, I took the wrong binder, so I lost my notes. Uh, just a comment on the gentleman's thing, we have that for nonprofits, so hopefully we'll be able to host them. So that's, it should already be in place, so we've, yes, come here. Uh, so on that note, I'm talking about Freedom Plaza. So, uh, today, I don't know if everyone recalls it, but today is the eleventh of March and it is the three year anniversary, three years ago, and we had a party at the plaza for our grand opening there. So I think, uh, we should just reflect and see, we've come a long way and I think we've done a lot. I just think we could hopefully do better in the future and get more events there. Um, my main concern or what I want to make public comments on again tonight is everybody's favorite topic, the tourism board. We just reauthorized another round of the initial phase one study for Civitas to do the same thing we just did in twenty twenty three. Uh, I was on the steering committee for that, so I put a lot of my personal time and effort into it. And this is the twenty twenty three to twenty eight, uh, general plan for it or strategic plan. I I think the thing we need to ask before we spend another twenty five thousand to Civitas is what has changed in the operation of the visitor center between twenty twenty three, when we had to have a special recall or what do you call it, a special meeting and, uh, you know, dog and pony show at the, um, as I've heard someone call it up there over at Freedom Plaza and so forth. I think that they do a great job, we have a board with three new members and we had this discussion with two members absent, uh, on the T-Bid. It was a three, three out of five, uh, panel or whatever. So the new people who really should have been involved in the discussion weren't even there. And all of a sudden, we're going to write a check for twenty five thousand dollars to start this process again when nothing has improved. I understand Brienne would have a lot less time to do other things if she didn't have to do a yearly reauthorization, but we need the board to listen to a lot of the residents' concerns here about, let's give her more resources, let's do things, let's explore things differently. I'm glad they did the billboard campaign and they're doing a radio ad and they're doing things that I think would be great towards a regional perspective. So we spent forty three thousand dollars on that, but just think that's twenty three, twenty, twenty five thousand dollars to Civitas that I I don't think anything's changed, we're paying for the same thing over again. Um, I'm just going to add as Joshua Tree Gateway Communities Alliance, I I've actually been in contact with Civitas, working with the same person, Kelly Rankin, um, trying to organize a basin wide study. That would be a different perspective, give us different data and it's the same price. I'm also working with the other town down the road and I think if we had a discussion, it might be something the two towns could explore together. And one of the things I asked her and I researched explicitly was what if, what if we do the research and we say, no, we don't want to work with them? Would they be able to take the data and then do it on their own? Like say to do, say, no, we don't want to work with you, we're going to renew there? She said, yeah, we could do that. So again, I just think it's something to consider. I just think we need to, uh, be spending this assessment money more, uh, judiciously and just making sure we're accountable, thank you.
Thank you. I think you practice at home three minute drills. Ms. Susan Peplow?
Hello, uh, Susan Peplow, T-Bid stakeholder and Twenty Nine Palms, uh, property owner. If you need an address, uh, HC one, box six nine six, Joshua Tree. Uh, tonight I would like to speak also in regards to the T-Bid and the lack of follow through from the T-Bid as we need greater oversight to ensure our city is marketed effectively as a destination to bring in tourism dollars. For example, ask yourself, can you name two upcoming events sponsored by the T-Bid? Have you seen any advertisement encouraging people to attend or stay in Twenty Nine Palms for these events? Stakeholders have received no information or communication from the T-Bid regarding events that have been awarded or sponsorship or the funding. No constant contact, no email, no newsletter, no phone calls, nothing. So it's difficult to create a partnership with your stakeholders when there's no communication being held with them. If you look online, you'll find that marketing efforts are either lacking or nonexistent. Many events listed on the Visit Twenty Nine lead to incorrect websites and pages or Instagrams with no content, making it nearly impossible for anyone to get information. We are missing out on an opportunity to bring in much needed tourism dollars because our marketing and outreach are falling short. As a property owner and a stakeholder, my goal is to help drive financial health for our city. And that means ensuring that we are effectively promoting Twenty Nine Palms to visitors. Without proper communication and accountability and investing, investment in marketing, we cannot achieve that. I ask for your help. The T-Bid is not listening to stakeholders. We are completely ignored, the few of us that have any clue of what's going on. It's one of those you don't know what you don't know scenarios. We need city council to hold the T-Bid board accountable for what their marketing goals are to be. Please, take a moment, review the grants, review marketing. Do your own PIR and see how many communications have been pushed out of that office in the last six months, twelve months, eighteen months, two years since the last reauthorization or push to the ninety four law. You might find it's less than ten constant contact communications to these people. Please, step up because our financial health of our city is important to all of us and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie?
Hi. My name is Maggie, I am the owner of a house in, um, Twenty Nine Palm. I lived ten years in Twenty Nine Palm, I had business and I moved close to my family going, getting older. But I want to thank you to give me the opportunity to speak tonight. I really appreciate what I heard from everybody, but I want to speak about the road. The road in Twenty Nine Palm, the street, not the street, the streets are perfect, but the road to go to the house. I have a house very close to downtown and suddenly, um, this part of, very small part of the road to access to my property was impossible to drive on it. I almost broke my car because I, one told, one person told me one day, if you go fast, you can go through. I went fast and I almost broke my car. And, um, yeah, and today, almost the same thing, I left a part of my car on the, on the. And that is a big stress and I'm sure I am not the only one. I'm pretty sure I am not the only one. I see in your agenda for a lot of time now, almost a few months for sure, it will be on the next agenda to speak about street, road. And believe me, every time, because I know I cannot speak about something from the agenda, I I wait and it never came and it's for a long time, you can check. I don't want to be too long, I don't want to focus only on me. I'm pretty sure people are concerned, but also I heard people want to bring people to Tw- Twenty Nine Palm. You, when I was living here, it was a big concern to have tourists, to have business, to have. If you have road when people drive and see the road close to downtown, it's not at the end of the the coun- county or the, no, close to downtown, going to the park and these roads are not maintained, it doesn't give a good idea about Twenty Nine Palm. It doesn't say, oh, this city take care of people, no. It said, oh, they are abandoned, they abandoned their house, they abandoned their street, they don't care. I don't think the people of Twenty Nine Palm don't care. The people I knew when I was here, when I had business here, when I live here in this town I love, believe me, I love Twenty Nine Palm, did, did care, they care a lot and I hope we continue to do that. Streets and roads are very important. I know it's about money, but not everything is about money. People need to be safe to go to their home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eileen Leslie?
Good evening, council. Eileen Leslie, stakeholder, property owner, Twenty Nine Palms. Business owner. I went to the last T-Bid meeting and was surprised, well shocked, to learn that the T-Bid board are seeking to avoid city council yearly oversight as they are trying to change the structure to the ninety four law. As you know, they would only be reviewed by you every five years. In fact, the T-Bid board approved a Civitas contract for twenty four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to start the process. Interesting, under the twenty five thousand that triggers council approval. Of the stakeholders that were there and spoke, it was clear there was a lack of confidence such that was expressed by the elders two years ago on this topic. We were not provided any analytics, proof of success, or even progress made over the last two years that any marketing attempts increased tourism or could substantiate the efficacy of a change of oversight from one to five years. Please note, one hundred percent of the stakeholders, public comments were opposed to this change. And I would say we've been down this road before and it seems like we have no reports coming in. I've asked for audits of things when I've been at the meetings. We don't know what any of the events have done money wise and a lot of us have lowered all of our pricing in order to get more heads in beds. And I'll go one step further, we're down to three hundred and, well, it could be less now, uh, from last week, we're down to three hundred and sixty six short term rentals. And I know that that may not be, um, problematic for the city in light of the other, uh, And I know that that may not be, um, problematic for the city in light of the other, uh, housing and, uh, what is it called, revolve, I don't remember what it's called, but the storage container, you know, so you're going to get money coming in here, but what you're going to also cause is a lot of the single-family residents to become sold, not go to long-term rentals, I know that you, you all have this idea that that's automatically going to happen, but if you were, go to Realtor.com even just to say, today, you would see that there are over two hundred and sixty listings for houses for sale, and I would add that most of those are being sold furnished, because those people are just leaving the industry of being a short-term rental, renting operator. So I really think that, you know, before this comes again in August, we need to prepare, you need to ask questions, they never come in here and tell you anything substantial, we don't know what's going on, and you know, to take time out of our schedules and to go there and to speak up, ask questions, putting suggestions, and to be completely ignored every time, it's just not acceptable, and I would ask you to really analyze this before they hit you up again for the five-year plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Vino?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I borrow the bench to give you a handout?
Yes.
Vino Nathraj, seven-one-eight-two-nine-twenty-nine Palms Highway. Thank you, Mayor, city council members. I come here today not to make personal attacks, but to bring things to your notice, to make our city a better place to live, work, and attract tourism, which is the backbone of our economy. In my handouts, page one is guest reviews for the shore stay, Best Western. I've read over four hundred of them. Page two is the price one would pay for the stay, the shore stay. If an owner is a franchise hotel serving breakfast, at that rate, you are actually paying the guests to come and stay at your hotel. Page three to page ten is photos from guest reviews. All of this is public knowledge. The shore stay is owned by our very own T-Bid chairman, Mr. Akesh Mehta, who has been in that position for almost a decade, nominated by the city council. For crying out loud, he is ambassador to tourism for our city. I've been coming here for years and I've been telling you all that you're nominating the wrong people in positions to advise you all. If I was sitting in your position, I would be greatly concerned, do I want owners with direct buildings that can put life and safety of people in our city at risk? We need a recall of our T-Bid chairman, Mr. Akesh Mehta, and an overhaul of the T-Bid board. The T-Bid today is a joke with small businesses closing and hotels suffering, and I'm a stakeholder in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city manager's update?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. So, coming up on the twenty-fourth, we had an earlier presentation, earlier meeting this month, uh, in regards, or with the ministerial association, and it was a good get-together, and really the purpose of that, the ministerial association and the community service group, was to get those two entities together to talk about what they and then their members can do in the event of an emergency. And so we're gonna be having a follow-up meeting on the twenty-fourth here at City Hall at eight-thirty, and that is gonna be, again, open to the ministerial association, the various churches within our community, and then also, uh, any of the different service groups to talk, to continue that conversation. And so when we, when we say that conversation, what we mean is to help us in real time understand what's going on in the event of a disaster and also help with recovery. Uh, really, those two organizations, those two groups are deeply committed to the community, have deep roots, have, have members of both, uh, entities scattered throughout the community. And so this is just part of the city's effort to improve the awareness of disaster preparation and then what we can do. So that is what I've got for today.
Your, that was it? All right.
If you got another thirty or forty.
No, we're good, we're good. All right, from here, we're gonna adjourn to closed session. Closed sessions, a closed session of the city council may be held in accordance with state law, which include, but not is not limited to, the following types of items: personal matters, labor negotiations, security matters, providing instruction to real property negotiations, and conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. The closed session will be held in City Hall Conference Room located at six, sixty-one thirty-six Adobe Road, Twenty-Nine Palms, California. Any public comment on closed session items will be taken before the closed session. Any required announcements or discussions of closed session items or actions following the closed session will be made in the city council chamber, six-one-three-six Adobe Road, Twenty-Nine Palms, California. Anything from the public?
So, uh, that comment is on item one, which is the city manager, uh, renewal or the performance evaluation.
Yes.
Uh, I, first of all, just wanna say, A-plus, please, you know, Stone, Dr. Stone does a great job, you know, he got here and then we had our flash flood and river and big thing, and I don't think the poor man has had a, a night's sleep, good night's sleep since he got here. Um, you know, uh, I, I just also went, I mean, I'm, I'm basically, one thing Stone said to me when he got here, a little shortly after there was all the flood going on, was we were talking about the T-Bid renewal at that time, and I know he was overwhelmed and there was a lot of stuff going on that he had to take care of with the recovery and all of the other stuff, but one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, question whether if I were to speak up against the renewal of the T-Bid. And I know he was trying to give me a little political education because of, shortly before that, uh, Dr. Stone and Councilmember Scott went to a meeting with Supervisor Dawn Rao at her office in response to some issues I have with the county. And Octavius, I know you and I have spoken about, we have differences on the T-Bid and a few things, and you know, I, I really, you know, felt when we went to that meeting with her, because there is a lot of regional stuff that is not being addressed here. And toward, a couple months ago, you kinda made a comment about not wanting to support my grievances with the county. I don't necessarily have a grievance, I have issue, I have valid concerns that need to be addressed, you know, and I understand you don't, you, or Stone knew the history there of my six years in this town and what I've done. I, I, I think we just need to, to work together with these different towns, and I know Dr. Stone is now the, uh, chairperson on the homeless committee and so is, uh, uh, Councilmember Ramirez. I, I'm attending that, but now I can't really speak up and do a lot of things because now I'm on the healthcare district community healthcare board, so that's a conflict to me. I probably will be stepping down from that because I'm doing my gateway regional stuff and it's gonna be conflicting with the healthcare district board, I'm gonna talk to, uh, the CEO on that anyways, about that. But I have concerns about homelessness, tourism, and I'm working with people in Riverside County, Desert Hot Springs, uh, the city manager Doria Wilm, she, she did a great presentation and today I attended, um, Councilwoman Ramirez.
Mr. Lindas, your comments are about?
It is about the, the things, so what I'm saying is, my, my advice would be to please make sure that we're addressing, uh, you know, if we need adequate staff, I feel like the city manager's department is understaffed. I, I think he needs a deputy, I think we need people to address these comments that have a little more time to address them. You know, he goes there, we go, he spends time going to that meeting for an hour, and we just run this homeless meeting for an hour under the Brown Act, not letting people, all these service providers get their stuff, and so I think that's something that's in the interest of the city, and we need to encourage supportive, you know, yeah, so that's, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I can't adjourn the meeting, but you wanna hang out here while we're back there, that's on y'all. All right, thank you.